Michelle, can you?
All right, I'll get us rolling. I just got up the agenda. All right, so you're all good then? You're re- okay, all right. Good evening and welcome to the August 4th, 2020 Northern Lebanon School Board meeting. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you all for joining us this evening. The board and Dr. Messinger are physically present in the school library this evening with the exception of myself. I am out of town and therefore joining virtually this evening. Due to state mandates limiting gatherings of under twen- two under 25 people, and in order to maintain physical distancing, we are not yet able to welcome community member participants to board meetings in person. We thank you for joining us virtually until we can physically meet together again. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by 6:25 this evening via email or online form. Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ray?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Sekelvik?
Here.
Nom?
Here.
And Box?
Here.
All members present?
Thank you. May I, oops, let me double check. Um, may I have a motion to adopt tonight's meeting agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Moving on to item number four, this is our public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by 6:25 this evening. Tonight, we have two public comment requests. Um, when it is your turn to comment, please state your name and address before speaking, and you will have four minutes for public comment. Our first request was Eric Gardner.
Michelle?
Yep.
Uh, they are not online currently.
Neither of our requesters?
No.
Okay.
If you can talk to them and they would like to speak, you can allow them to speak.
Okay, should I circle back around to this at the end, or?
Sure, we can check back.
Michelle, just feel free to circle back right before the board votes, um, on the few items that you have. Uh, they might be available then. The most important thing is that we're able to get public comment before the bo- board takes official action.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we will move forward with item number five, that is our presentation. Dr. Messinger, would you like to introduce him?
Yeah, we have Brad Remming, uh, Remming PD. He's been here before, uh, talked to us about bonds, uh, and some financing. Um, as you know, rates are low right now, and, uh, we have, uh, some preliminary numbers from the Crabtree study, uh, that he's kind of referenced as well, but, uh, he wanted to talk to us about the potential to refinance some things at this time.
Uh, Mr. Remming, you are muted.
There we go, I gotta figure that out, sorry. This is only about the 30th Zoom meeting I did, I figured it out, so. Well, it's good to see everybody. Uh, I wish I could be there in person. I'm sure, you know, these are difficult times. It's always nice to see people in, uh, in person, but, you know, I understand this is how we need to do things nowadays, so I'll do my very best to kind of go through, uh, the information that I've prepared. Just so the board is aware, just so you know, um, I have family that lives in the district, so I've got some people to answer to also at the Christmas dinner table. So I have some, uh, family that are residents. My niece graduated there quite a long time ago, but nonetheless, uh, I want to keep this, uh, these, this financing for these projects as minimally to your budget as well, because again, I've got a lot of people to answer to as well, so. Um, anyhow, I don't know whether you were all, um, given a copy of, uh, the materials that I prepared. I don't know whether you have them on your desktop or whether they'll be shared with on your screen, but nonetheless, I know I sent some information over for you to look at, um, for the meeting. As Gary mentioned, um-
Brad?
Yes.
Do you, are you able to screen share that?
I don't think I, uh... Have that. I don't have that ability, um...
Brad, if you can, in an email, you could pull up the email that you forwarded to Gary and then screen share what you have on that page. You have a computer with email.
I think I can drive it up. Do you want me to try? Do I have that?
Yeah, go ahead if you want, Leanne.
Perfect.
Oh, it says I'm not, I'm disabled.
Hold on.
Who is the host?
Try again, Leanne.
There we go. That looks familiar. Thank you so much, Leanne. Uh, okay, so, um, going through this, this is the, as Gary mentioned, this first page, um, is what you would see a lot from me when, uh, we start getting into further discussions. It's basically an interest rate chart or a municipal bond market update. Brooke has seen this from me many a time, that chart. Um, but if you scroll through it and you'd be kind enough to go to the bottom half of the page, this kind of gives you an idea of where the municipal bond index is. It's kind of like the Dow Jones or the S and P. Most people are familiar with the stock market, but our, our municipal bond world has an index as well. Um, the middle chart that you see on, right there on top of your page, kind of graphs the 10-year rate of the index since 1993. And if you look, if you go back and look, what is that, 25, 28 years or so now, you can see that to the right, they're really at all-time lows. Rates are very, very low. Um, so this is a very attractive time to be talking about financing projects as well as maybe looking at existing debt projects, and we'll get there a little bit later today as well. The very bottom chart isolates this graph really for the last, we'll call it 18 or so months, 19 months. Um, and you'll see that really in 2019, rates continued down. And as you get to the right, you would see, you see that rather dramatic spike and quite tumultuous volatility in the market. Now is right when the pandemic hit. So you could see interest rates in our world really went up overnight when the pandemic hit, uh, but seemed to calm back down. The basic way that it calmed back down was when we saw the stimulus packages in Washington coming through, and, uh, you know, unstableized our market. And here we are in July and August timeframe, where we're back at all-time lows and the market's functioning quite, uh, quite well. It was a, it was a rocky 60 sa- 60 days or so though, um, but we've kind of stabilized as well to, um, you know, being a very attractive market. The next page, um, page number two is a picture of your existing debt. Those are your existing payments that you have on outstanding bonds that you're currently paying on. Um, you'll notice on the top half of the chart, those are the principal and interest payments by fiscal year, um, for those two, uh, deals that were done in 2012. You'll notice that if you go to the bottom of the page, the numbers in the far-right column, total eight, are slightly lower. And that be- that's because we are getting some state reimbursement on your 2012 A bonds. So we get some revenue and Leanne puts in for the debt payments. She then sends the form to PD and we get some dollars back from that. So that's the reason, uh, we factor in that revenue, um, to offset your debt on a net basis on the bottom half. So you can see basically right now, for the next, I'm gonna say nine years or so, your net debt service in your budget is about $1.3 million, okay? As we, uh, that's a good part to point to start at. Um, as we move towards the bottom of that page a little bit further, um, there are some, there's some other data points up there, things that are of interest. We just go a little bit lower. Um, you'll notice that PE percentage, that's that plan con I discussed. But you'll notice also that the bonds have what we call a call date, where a date where you have the option to refinance or prepay them, which we just kind of turned the, uh, over in, in 2020. So we'll get to this a little bit later, but you do have the option. There's your option, oh, if you want to refinance these, we can get them out. That's what we're gonna talk a little bit about later. The other thing I want to point out is in the box there, it says principal. Um, that gives you an idea of just what the principal portion of the bonds are right now. So if you were to go to the far right, if someone's in how much debt does the school district have, you have about $11,495,000 in debt that we will give you. Okay, so that's a good starting spot to figure out, okay? If we're looking at some new projects, what do we have now and how do we factor that all in? Um, we put its, uh, a page together here of some topics for discussion. I promise I'm not gonna go through every single one of them. Um, but there are certain things, there's certain laws, certain rules that Brooke and her partners will have to step us through as we go ahead and do some financing, um, for the capital program as well as any refinancing. This page really kind of highlights a couple things. First is what I would, I, I put in Romaner, Romaner Rule 2, reimbursement resolution. That's something that we may want to consider putting in place, and that is, um, there are some costs that you may incur as you begin the planning of this process. And you may not have borrowed the funds because you're not really sure how much you need or how much when you're really committed, but you might be having some expenses ahead of time. One of the things that a reimbursement resolution allows you to do under the tax code is it allows you to reimburse your general fund or capital reserve from a future tax, future bond issue, reimburse your, you know, your capital reserve or your capital fund for those monies that you've drawn to the, uh, whole of the budget. It's something we, we, as I talked a little bit about in the end, it might be something that we might want to consider putting in place to the extent the board might want to, uh, give yourself flexibility to be able to do it. It doesn't require you to do it, but it gives you the flexibility to put dollars back in to your general fund if you had to front them, uh, to base them up on loans. Brooke and her team know more about the specifics of it. There are some different tests and different rules, but nonetheless, I just want to throw that out there tonight to let you know that. Um, the other, uh, thing that I think is important, and you know, the federal tax code has thousands and thousands of pages. But one, one of the other things that I want to make sure that the board is aware of is that when you borrow funds for a capital project and you want to do so on a tax-exempt basis, you basically need to reasonably, reasonably expect to spend the majority of those dollars within three years. Okay, so that's kind of good, I could feel the know that you can't go ahead and borrow money today for a project that's gonna occur in 2030. You really have to have reasonable expectations that they'll be expended within the first three years. And, um, you need to also, um, need to be, uh, in a time test where you have substantial binding obligation to spend at least 5% of the money within six months. And that's basically, uh, if you were under a contract with your architect, I think that would kind of meet that test. Those are just some general guidelines that I wanted to point out. Um, the other thing that I wanted to point out as I go a little bit further is I don't know whether we'll be able to take advantage of it on this, but one of the things that you're able to do is if you're able to borrow, uh, split up the borrow, throwing into some smaller amounts. Um, it's basically called bank qualified. And if you do under $10 million in a calendar year, you can enjoy some certain benefits. You get certain advantages on your interest rates from the market. Um, it's something we want to keep in the back of my mind, so if, when we come out and put together a full plan, I just have an illustration of one right now. When we put together a full plan, um, you know, we'll, if you hear me talk about trying to keep a deal bank qualified and do it in smaller amounts, there are some advantages to that, but we obviously need to make sure we balance that with things like closing costs. Um, the other thing too I wanted to point out in, in Romaner Rule 5 real quickly is that there are various ways to finance projects. The most common way that schools do it is through municipal bonds. Um, and that's what you've done historically in the past. Um, and, you know, that's something that we'll be looking into as well. Um, but also there is ways to go to banks for direct loans. I just was telling Leanne today, we just worked with the Northern Lebanon County Authority to refinance some of their debt. And Jonestown Bank, uh, was very attract, gave us some very attractive, um, terms and conditions for, to refinance some of their existing debt. So it's something that we like to at least talk with, uh, a client to let them know that, you know, we're, as your financial advisor, we're not just strictly in the, uh, world of doing bonds. We also do bank loans as well. So as we go through this, if you hear me talk about bank loans, um, versus bonds, what I'm trying to do is just delineate which is the lowest overall cost to the district, because that's my job. So I just want to make sure that I put that out as well. A couple of things that I didn't put on this page that I thought were worth notice, were worth noting was there are all, there are also some state laws that we need to comply with. And that's what's called, uh, there's what's called the Local Government Unit Debt Act. We need to make sure that we comply with when we do our financings. There are certain things in that, in, um, that law that talk about, for example, we cannot have, issue debt and have balloon payments, for example. For example, when we structure the debt, much like your debt is structured now, we basically need to have level payments or declining payments. You can't go out there today as board, borrow a whole bunch of money, 20 years have a big balloon payment that a future board or somebody has to deal with. So we just have to make sure we, make sure that the, the payments on an overall basis, you know, are level. Um, there's the plan con process. I don't know whether John Medea talked to you a little bit about that, but we'll have to keep, make sure that we keep that in mind. There are certain advertising requirements that'll need to be complied with if you want to do a borrowing. And the other thing I also like to point out is that, um, under state law, uh, the district is allowed to borrow about 225% of your average revenues for the last three years. You can borrow as much as you want if you go to referendum. Without going to referendum, that's kind of your, your borrowing capacity. So if I looked at it correctly, you're running a budget right around 40 million. So that would mean that unless you go to the voters, as of today, you would have the capacity to borrow about $90 million, um, without having to go to the voters. That calculation is done every year because your revenue changes every year and you pay down debt, so it's kind of a living, um, thing that, calculation that we know need to go through each and every time we do a financing. I just thought that would be a good frame for you to know, um, as you consider your overall capital. So before I get into some of my illustrations, I just did a lot of talking really quickly about something that's probably relatively new to a lot of folks. So I'd be happy to pause here and see if, um, there's any questions for me at this point. Okay. Salute?
Brad, hold on.
Sure.
You showed the chart despite the first, uh, Romaners, uh, and whatever it spiked up. It was interesting, I'm gonna note that we're right now really going through the same thing. So if that spiked up, yeah, we go through the reaction. We have the city play, it's fully consolidated value, obviously, just now.
Correct. What, when this was really, um, I think what this is an illustration of is this, nobody knew anything about this virus. And what happens when people panic and there's becomes a, um, you know, uh, the, the financial markets, basically what investors are looking for is they're looking for cash. And because this caught everybody slightly off-guard, especially the impact this was gonna have, what happened was nobody wanted to buy municipal bonds. And everybody was selling municipal bonds because they wanted cash. Um, so, and because there was no, nobody buying, that's what made interest rates go up. And then when the, the Washington, the DC stepped in and said that the Fed and the Treasury provide munis, that's when it stabilized back down. I think that the market kind of has enough liquidity flushed into it that I don't see, well, I think we'll see a spike in terms of interest rates for the mini-market like we did in March. But to your point, yes, if this thing got out of control, um, you could, would have the ability to, um, you know, put this on pause. We're, as financial advisors, we're not gonna put you into a market like that. In fact, for Pennsylvania schools during the month of March, there was like three transactions for a month. And there's usually 25, 30 a month. So I think to, and hopefully answer your question directly. I don't anticipate a spike like this happening again, but if something like this was, was to occur, we certainly wouldn't want to put you in a market in that, you know, conditions. So, um, I just thought it was kind of important to give you a five or 10-minute background or maybe 15-minute background on, you know, what, what it is. We have some federal laws, there's some state laws we need to comply with. And we'll, you know, walk with you along, step along the way to make sure we can do that as well as I know Brooke and her team as well as well. Um, what I did on, very, very basically, what I did on the next page in some, uh, is an illustration of doing some financings for what we understand your elementary projects to be. Uh, Leanne was kind enough to share with me some information that Crabtree, um, shared with you in terms of a project that might cover the elementary schools. Uh, I'll talk, I think that construction cost was 35 million. And usually what I try and do is figure, um, I know that there's some certain other soft costs. That num- that number, when you get into a total project number, is somewhere in the, usually the 20% favor when we start talking about contingencies and things of the like and financing. But I'll leave that up, um, to discussions as we go longer. But I thought it would be important to give you an idea of if we needed to do a project. I talked to John Medea, he was saying 40 million. So I did 42, something like that, to give you an idea of what that might look like to you in terms of how you might structure a new, uh, new, some new bonds and how the payments might fall into your budget. So what we did here is in the green column, I assumed that you did a $20 million bond issue, that's shown in the box at the top. And then how much money, there'll be some closing costs, how much money would wind up in your project fund? It would be about $19.7 million. And I assume that you did that here in the first quarter of 2024. We then started to layer in, so we're kind of moving left to right. Column four is the fiscal year. Column five is your existing net payments that I went over with before. Those are the debts you already have, you have to pay. Column six would be the new payments on the new $20 million bond. Then column seven adds column five and six together. That's how that kind of progresses after that. One thing that you'll notice on my green column is you'll notice that I had the payments in the first nine years or eight years, excuse me, a little bit lower than the out years. And the reasoning for that is we're trying, we would try and keep the payments a little bit lower during the years that you already have the current payments on your existing debt, then have them, um, get a little bit larger as some of those other debts got paid off. This is what we refer to as a wraparound scheduling. Very, very common technique used by a lot of schools nowadays that are doing projects. Because you're under actual one and because there's so many other budget pressures that you're facing, this is a very common structure where we would simply, um, have lower payments upfront and then they would grow as, as time went on. You know that these are not, uh, these payments, we're assuming it would be a fixed rate of interest. It's not a variable rate or anything like that. It would be what we refer to as a fixed rate bond issue, maybe a block. We then make sure, we want to make sure in the red, we then said, okay, maybe we just borrow about half of it to start and we do the other half in the spring of 2022. You know, we'll have more information on the bids. We'll have more information on how much money we really need. This is a very common plan where you would get some money upfront and then do a second financing or cleanup once you know how change orders are going, once you know how, you know, the project's proceeding, things of the like, so that we can make sure we borrow the appropriate amount of money. You'll notice there as well, we kept the payments a little bit lower, um, in those upfront years through '28, '29, and then they ramped back up. You'll also notice that, hopefully that you'll noticing that when we structured the green, we have kept in mind that the red's coming. So whenever we do these plans, we try and work with the clients to make sure that we don't do anything today that would hurt us for our second decision in the future. So we've kept that in mind a little bit as well. Um, so you'll notice that, uh, you know, that's how we've kind of, uh, set this up and how we would probably put together at least a first stab on how this might look for you if you did, if you move forward with these projects as soon as next spring. The other thing that you'll notice too in the, in the green, I hate to go back over there, but I think Leanne will be happy to see that we didn't assume any payments would hit this year's budget. This budget's already been put in place. There's no dollars allocated for new debt payment, so we have assumed that that begins in '21, '22. I also took the liberty in column 10 in putting it as a millage equivalent as well. Okay, I think I might be a little aggressive, Leanne, I talked about it at the bottom left in terms of what we assume your value of a mill is, but it gives you an idea of how that might be laid out over a three-year period of time. Okay, in terms of equivalent. This does not factor in anything that may be being a relief in your budget due to your project. I'm not sure I know exactly the nature of, of everything associated with a project, but I know that sometimes when people do major projects, there are certain operational savings in your budget that you are able to experience. I don't know if that's the case here or not, but to the extent those are dollars that would be replaced with debt service, then the millage equivalent may not be as high as I'm showing you here, if that makes any sense to you. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to also mention was we have laid out a three-year, um, millage equivalent in terms of what the cost would be, just as assuming it was all needed to be raised by new mills, um, what it would be over a three-year period of time. Obviously, the timing of this makes a difference, okay, when the payments start hitting. There are also certain, um, techniques that we can use to spread them out over a longer period of time, maybe four or five years. We can use, you know, if we have any cash available, you cannot have to put it in millage rate right away. So there are different ways or different techniques to make that spread out over a longer period of time. Um, but basically looking at the, if we have the value of a mill right, using the, um, millage value that we have, using the wrap technique, you're probably looking at an equivalent of about 1.17 mils showing in column number 10 to do this, okay? But again, please keep in mind, we have some flexibility and other techniques that we can use or show you that maybe would help you smooth it out and not be so, um, you know, burdensome on some, uh, the first couple budgets. All right, we'll, we'll look into that. We did also, um, structure this as, if you'll notice, we go, the, the payments go out to 2051. That's a 30-year financing, okay? We did structure it over a longer period of time for a couple reasons. First off, if this is a new elementary school, the useful life can justify a longer financing, okay? I know all of us like to pay off our debts as soon as we possibly can. And you would, whenever we put, do these bonds, you would have the ability to prepay and do that and shorten them if you so desired. But we wanted to show you a little bit of a longer, um, repayments, um, term. It also allows you a lower upfront impact. I mean, obviously you can figure that out when you all bought your homes. Some people can afford a 15-year mortgage. I sure couldn't, I needed to do a 30-year mortgage. But so the longer the repayment term, um, the more affordable it is to your budget. The other thing I should mention too is that there, again, there's always gonna be the option to refinance in the future. So depending on how things look and how things play out, you could always pay it down more quickly if you so desire to do that. The other thing that I wanted to keep in mind is that I know that, and I should say, actually, I understand that you are looking at, um, potential other projects, not just this one. So one of the things we want to make sure that we do when we do put a financing together for this project is that we keep in mind that we may have things coming down the pike and we don't want to put you in a position that would hamstring you from making some future decisions that you may need, may need to make for any other facilities that you're dealing with. Um, so with that, uh, you'll notice what I did on the bottom right, those are some of the presumed project costs. Again, I didn't go over all this with John, we haven't, you know, I'm sure you, there's a lot, a long way to go there, but I just thought it was important for me to lay out what I understand the case may be on how this may look for the elementary project. So with that, I, again, I spoke up, I talked a lot, quickly on a lot of stuff. Happy to pause here and see if there's any questions.
Brad, are you, are you, uh, are you also attending next week?
The 11th?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if I was asked to do that, but I think, I think my schedule is good for Tuesday night. I don't think I have anything. I know I have one Monday and I have one Wednesday, but I'll, I'll, I'd be happy to, my answer is if you would like me to attend Tuesday, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, I'm just thinking that, um, this document, we, we do have this on board docs. Uh, however, we did, I don't know that we've had a tremendous amount of time to digest it. And I'm wondering if maybe you'd be available to come back and just answer a few questions if we have questions at that point for the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, if you can't, let, let us know, we'll arrange a different night.
I think John, John and I have been in touch too. I think he's gonna be presenting on the 11th as well.
He is, yes.
Um, don't, if, if it's okay, there was one other thing that I did want to step through here. And again, this will be, this is again food for thought, something that you can, uh, think about. We did look at the, um, your other existing debt, um, and to re, to look at a potential refinancing. And it's eligible, these, both of these bonds are eligible to be refinanced now, as I mentioned earlier. The 2012 A is in the blue and the 2012 B is in the red. And based on what we, um, recently received in proposals, actually, I don't know if I mentioned or not, but for the Northern County Lebanon Authority, um, we did get some pretty attractive proposals for bank financing. And we use those numbers as a guideline to see what we could do for the school district or what may be able to be done for the district. And you'll notice that what we did is in column, um, in the blue, in column five, if you refinance the 2012 bond with one of those loans, in column five, you would save somewhere in the neighborhood of $41,000 over that four-year period of time. In the red, if you did, uh, um, refinance the 2012 Bs- In the red, if you did refinance the 2012 Bs, and if we were able to get attractive proposal on that one, it looks like you could save about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, about seventy-five grand a year, is the potential for the, for the district if you refinance. Now, this might be something you want to do in conjunction when you do new money, or this might be something that you may want to consider doing now. We, we illustrated this, assuming that you want, that you did it now, just to let you know, we could move expeditiously on this. And this is something that the board wanted us to proceed with, because it would be an option for you. It would allow us, if you'll notice in those boxes, it would allow us to take advantage of the bank qualified. Thing that I mentioned earlier, we probably couldn't do it if we did it with the new money on bank qualified, but I just thought we should throw it out there for you to let you know, there's, there is an opportunity. The other thing that Leanne and I actually chatted about was, I basically just illustrated a way that you could take savings spread out over the life of the bonds. You have some options as to how you take those savings. So for example, if you said to me, and you know, we noodle on this a little bit, on the blue one, I'm sorry, on the red one, Brad, gee, seventy-five grand a year, that sounds great, and obviously we'd love to save that money, but is there a way for you to take more savings in the three years that I'll have to be phasing in my new debt payments? Can you put them upfront a little bit more to help me offset the cost associated with phasing in the new debt payments to my budget? That's something we could discuss. You have some options in that area as well. I just laid it out for you, level over time, but it's something that you may want to consider, you know, on some refinancing. Again, we can wait and do it with your new money early next year, if that's how this all plays out, or we can do it now. That's again, something for you to noodle on, and maybe that's a good discussion for next week as well. But there does seem to be an opportunity to save a couple dollars on this. This resolution that I put in here would be something that if you decided to move forward now with a refinancing, would be something that would be probably appropriate for the board to approve, authorizing everybody, Brooke, Kurt, Brooke's team, our team, to go ahead and, go ahead in what we call the dual track process, that's looking at, looking at getting bank proposals as well as keeping track of the bond market and figure out what the best way to save some money is if you wanted to do the refinancing. This is kind of the fastest you can move. Again, please, no pressure, first time you're seeing all this, I get it, but we're, I just wanted to make sure that I outlined for you next steps as it relates to the refinancing. As it relates to the new money, that's going to obviously just depend on how you progress with your plans and how you want to move forward with that as well. But I thought I should lay this out for you as well.
Any questions for Brad at this point? Give you a chance to look over that. And then talk next week if he's available.
There's lots of stuff, lots of stuff here, I get it, but we'll get through it, don't worry. We'll get through it.
Well, thank you, Brad, we appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, I guess I should sign off then, Gary?
Hey, you're welcome to stay and talk about our instructional plan if you'd like.
I, you know what, I was on a meeting with Topahawk and School District doing that, and I was after that, and I got on at seven, and they got to me at ten.
All right, well, you probably owe me a meal or something.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is four at this point. Michelle, can you hear us a little better right now?
Rachel was difficult to hear, I could hear her, and I can hear you pretty well.
Okay, we're going to move the mic around.
Okay.
As we, I'm going to start and introduce the, talk about the learning plan.
Yes.
Not to take your...
All right, moving on to item number six, the instructional plan.
Okay. You have seen the plan, it is on the onboard docs. I'll talk about what we had to do first. The state is requiring school districts to have either two separate plans or two components to one plan, either way, that outlines the health and safety precautions that we will be taking to open school. That includes things like buses, ventilation, how we're going to disinfect, when we're going to disinfect classrooms, social distancing, how we're going to run the recesses and cafeteria and things like that. The health and safety plan has been the draft that has been online for several weeks now that I distributed to you guys a couple of weeks ago. We've gotten a lot of feedback, about, about forty-three comments through our online forum that we're working through, most of which we have made, have answered in the FAQ section that is in the reopening part of the website. And then some other comments from team members that we're still plugging away, but are very, very close to a final draft that will be available by the end of the week, by Thursday. The other side of that is the instructional piece, and what instruction will look like for kids as they return in the fall. As you know, well, I should say, both sides, both plans have to be approved in order for us to open school. So without approval of those plans, at some point, we will not, we are not able to open school. The instructional plan is important for us to, to get moving on so that we can ask parents for a selection, because I want to talk about some options, ask parents to finalize their selection so that we can examine class lists, we can examine bus rosters, and we can make sure that as we transition, we are keeping as much social distance as possible. So for instance, I'll give you an example, we have a first grade classroom who some, some students had moved out of state, and that, the number in that classroom has been reduced to twelve. But there's another first grade class that has about eighteen. So what we need to do is find out, well, how many of those thirty total students are going to be virtual? I'm going to be live streaming their classes from home? We're going to take advantage of V3. If, if another six of those students take advantage of one of those virtual options, now we're down to twenty-four, and we would split the classes, obviously, twelve and twelve. If they stay though, we would even that out, so they would be at fifteen and fifteen. We need to take a look at that to make sure that things are as level as can be. Certainly in each building, we can do that, harder to do that across the district as a whole. But that's an important part of this, for parents to be able to get those options, understand what they are, and then be able to choose. So I'm going to talk about the three choices, and then I'm going to talk about the three levels. Essentially, the three choices are this. And depending on what level we're on, you would be able to come to school physically. Okay? You also would have the choice, no matter any of the levels, whether we're at a level one, a level two, or a level three, you would be able to attend virtually, which would mean a live stream of the teacher who's up at the front of the room teaching while you would be attending virtually. You'd be able to ask questions, you'd be able to see the teacher teach, and be able to communicate back and forth, and you'd be able to hear classmates and what they're asking as well. And then a third option would be V3. We had over sixty people attend the V3 open house the other night, a lot of good questions. I think we had a boost, a jump in our enrollment there over the past week or so. So I want to dig in now to the three options, there are the three levels. Basically, the state has said that we need to have a level, an option, that if things are really good, we're not seeing cases, there's no community spread, and things are starting to get back to normal, that we are fully physical and we're back to school. Now, in that option, we still feel that it would be important to, for kids that aren't comfortable, to be able to continue to livestream. So that, level one is, things are really great, things are opening up, restrictions are being lifted, we're coming back to school physically, and we're inviting everybody to do that on a daily basis. And if you don't feel comfortable, you can livestream still from home, or you could go to V3. That's level one. Level two is an option where we're physically bringing kids back to school, but it looks a little different at the different levels. At the secondary level, it would be a hybrid approach. So for instance, each student would be assigned letter A or letter B, or a blue gold, if we go that route. And if you are on, if you were a letter A student, you would come to school on Monday, and you would come to school on Thursday. If you were a letter B student, you would come to school on Tuesday, and you would come to school on Friday. On the days in between, you would livestream your classes. On Wednesday, there would be assignments posted for both, both A and B. And teachers, teachers would post those assignments and then be available to answer questions and work with students virtually in their classrooms as students are online. That will enable us to do some deep cleaning, middle of the week, we have two days, we come back, we clean on Wednesday, teachers are in their room, and there are maybe a few students, which I'll explain in a second, but teachers are in their room, and kids are all virtual with assignments on a Wednesday. Come back Thursday, A comes, B is livestreaming, come back Friday, B comes, A is livestreaming. We do have a group that we would also be inviting to come to school on a daily basis. That would be students without internet, that would be students with that, that have maybe some special needs that require them to be here on a daily basis. We're not going to force them, if they would like to be home and do it livestream, that's fine, or they'd like to be part of a hybrid model, that's fine too. But there are a few groups, our CTC students, and then there's a few other small groups that we would invite to come, that would be Group C. Okay? And then, level three would be a situation where the Department of Health or the governor has shut schools down, and we are no longer allowed to attend, like what happened in March. At that point, we would be completely virtual. Now, if, if there's a situation where the Department of Health calls me and says, there's an outbreak at the high school, you need to shut down your middle school, high school, but elementaries can still be open. There is an option there for us to actually reduce the time that elementary students would be in, and that they would be on a half-day, a half-day schedule. They would come five days a week, they would get their reading and math, and then in the afternoon, they would do virtually a science, social studies, and their specials. And then we would flip-flop that. That's only if we get to a point where, and that is only an option that would be used under very specific circumstances. If the Department of Health says you got to shut everything down, you shut everything down. If the state says you got to shut everything down, you shut everything down. We will be notified by the Department of Health with any positive cases. They will let us know exactly who to quarantine, how long to quarantine, and then whether or not we have to do anything else as a district. So I appreciate the fact that they will be communicating with us about that, and we'll have guidelines for as we had each case. All right, I'm sure I forgot something, but are there questions? And I'll, if you want to say them, I'll repeat them for now, and then I'll, I'll move the mic around.
Gary, just for clarity, on elementary side, on the hybrid, they are in school five days.
I'm sorry, yes. Elementary at level two is in school all five days. Now, there's a few reasons why we felt that that was appropriate for elementary. One, elementary students stay together as a cohort. So they essentially would have two groups that they would come in contact with. They'd come in contact with people on the bus, and they'd come in contact with people in their classroom. That group of students would stay together throughout the entire course of the day. Matter of fact, principals have already designed coverage for teachers, so the teachers can eat lunch, but students will actually eat lunch in their classrooms. So they will pick up their lunch, they will go to their classroom, they will eat their lunch in their classroom. So we can keep elementary students together rather easily. Secondary level, not so much, because you might be in a group of people, and Director Fowler and Director Erdman have math first period, but second period, Director Fowler has physics, and Director Erdman has tiddlywinks. So, sorry, Director Erdman. It's, it's impossible to prevent the mixing at the secondary level. At the elementary level, we can prevent the mixing. And you'll see in our health and safety plan that we won't be moving groups of kids around, that we have a plan to allow teachers to virtually, if they're teaching different subjects, we're going to do it virtually with the other teacher in the room, but we're not going to be moving kids around the elementary. The other reason is that elementary kids, the daycare for elementary is also more difficult for them, for parents, because you can't, obviously, you're not going to leave your second grade student home alone, and therefore, that's a burden on parents. And the third reason is honestly, we believe that secondary students learn virtually better than elementary students do. It's so important for elementary students to grasp reading at a young level, at an early age, and without having them in buildings, it's very difficult to give them the support they need for that. So those are the three main reasons why we handled the elementary differently than we handled the secondary at level two. I will also say that my intention would be to begin the school year at level two. I believe that, I've looked at, I look at a couple of different sets of numbers. There's a set of numbers that is put out by Harvard, which I think would represent one side of the aisle, and there's a set of numbers that are put out by the Trump Task Force, which I believe would represent the other side of the aisle. And if you look at both of them, they both say that still, that schools should be in some sort of hybrid model based on our numbers currently. So looking at both, both the, both sides of things, and those two as a, as a metric, they're both saying a hybrid model would be appropriate, that would be our level two. Other questions before I...
Is the level one, two, and three, is that dictated by the state governor, or is it your choice?
It, it's, unfortunately, it's my choice, based on the metrics at the time, and looking at the numbers every single day. But it could be dictated by the governor. If the governor says you're closing, obviously, then, then that dictates for us. But for the most part, it would be just similar, I equate it on a much grander scale, I equate it to waking up and, and getting information about the state of the roads to determine if we're having school, a two-hour delay, or a school closure. Brooke, would you like to comment? Brooke, are you there?
I am, and I, I would also just clarify on that issue, I mean, Department of Health is going to be providing guidance to the extent that there are cases in the school, and they're going to be guiding the district relative to closure. So there's going to be a mix of players here. I think it's relatively unlikely that the governor explicitly is going to be closing schools anytime soon. It's more likely that the burden is going to fall on the Department of Health and their review of cases within the school building as time progresses, and unfortunately, it's going to fall on the shoulders of your superintendent, just like you would on any other day. And I think that's ultimately probably for the best. The broad-based closures probably aren't going to work because a lot of the Commonwealth is in a different position. And so counties are in different positions, and I think, I think we're going to be working closely with the Department of Health, and they say they're going to hire a bunch of consultants to help make those decisions in our districts. And I'm crossing my fingers, and if they are not there to provide that guidance, then we will help Dr. Messinger with some of those tough decisions. But fingers crossed that you're going to open the school year and you're not going to have a lot of those issues.
Two questions. And I don't know if this is for Dr. Messing or Brooke, but the first one is, is that a model that we're seeing other schools do, where the final decision is superintendent
Brooke, did you hear the question?
I did. I've sat in a lot of board meetings and I'm trying to remember if we even ever discussed this question. I don't honestly know the answer, because it has never come up. Many of the plans are tied to the color guidance. Some school districts are looking at rubrics relative to closure, but many of those rubrics are not based upon any Commonwealth data, they're based upon local attempts at closure data. Um... data, out-of-state attempts at reviewing case counts. So really, I mean, I think, I think the best guidance that we've given school districts is that many of their closure decisions are gonna be based upon what the Department of Health tells them, and your superintendent is gonna be consulting with them on those decisions, and ultimately is gonna hear from them on their recommendations. So that's a complicated, multi-level answer, but I think it varies. I have not seen any plans where I believe the school board makes that decision, because ultimately, this is one of those things that could crop up relatively quickly, and decisions have to be made, and with any hope, all of those decisions are based on science and guidance explicitly from the Department of Health relative to current cases. Did I answer that the best that I...
Yes, and you actually...
Did I answer your question?
Yes, and you actually answered part B of the question, and that was, have you seen school boards with that final authority? So thank you.
Yeah.
And then I did have a second... Thank you. I've seen a second, more granular question is, would ESL students be part of that Group Three?
Yes.
Okay.
You were to be applauded for that. I think this district has prioritized some of the most high-need learners that we have a specific legal obligation for, and that is the absolute best practice. And I am really proud of the district for making that a priority, because I know it's difficult.
Gary, I'm actually gonna steal Nate's question, talk about this a little bit, and this is outside of learning and more of the sports, because if typically JV teams, you have after-school practices, if you're on B, but your team is practicing on A, and that falls solely on the parent, or we coordinate any type of bussing or after-school activities...
You mean junior high. JV is...
Ninth grade, fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Sixteen, six months. Anybody that would, you know, ride with us, I guess.
Yeah. For the public, the question is talking about athletes and the kids that aren't here on a daily basis. Mr. Confer's actually exploring that with other ADs. We've talked about some options, we've talked about maybe some increased activity runs. We've certainly talked about changing times of some practices, because actually, a lot of our junior high and middle school practices are right after school, and that's a problem for parents to be able to transport them. So we're talking about flip-flopping and getting middle school a little bit later, so that those kids can be brought by parents. We've talked about reducing the number of practices per week to make that a little more, a little bit more manageable. It's a little bit easier, I think, for varsity JV, because there's enough kids that can drive and can help. I know that my daughter's on some rides quite often. But we're still, we're gonna have, I think, several different options, but I think right now, we're leaning toward coaches surveying players to determine what the needs are, and then running some activity buses to potentially help with that. Don't have that fully worked out yet. I mean, at this point, we, but Mr. Confer did come to me with that question about a week ago, and I said, "It's a great question, start working on an answer."
Question. So if we started in the hybrid model, is there, because I believe that from what I understand, at Hershey, we're committed to the entire first semester is going to be basically the hybrid. You know, I'm not sure if that's totally correct, but I think it is. So would we, would this be a one marking period commitment, or could, could after Week Two, if things are going really well, and all of a sudden, we're all in green, like what's the, what kind of timeframe would these different switches, could they happen? Obviously, the bad switches can happen over.
Right, right.
What about the good transitions?
Yeah, it's a good question, and I don't know, could you guys hear that question? Okay? Okay. About, a question about when to change. I think getting more restrictive is pretty easy. I think that, that one takes care of itself, like you said. As far as going from the hybrid to the green, I do not have a specific amount of time. Looking at those metrics, those two metrics, and kind of using them as a guide, and you wanna be consistent with it, like you don't wanna, I don't wanna see for one day, we hit the target, now we immediately change. We would also need an opportunity to make some adjustments, to go from half our kids to all of our kids, to be able to, and I think we can do that relatively quickly, quickly, because we have those plans, but at the same time, I wouldn't wanna overnight tell teachers, "Hey, tomorrow, all your kids are coming." I think that would be a mistake. And I think the third part, Nate, you know, I think as superintendent, I need to continue to communicate with the board about this stuff. If I think we're approaching those numbers, I wanna show you the data as to why my decision would be, I think we should look at this, and give you those numbers, and say, "Hey, I mean, here's where we are, we're at less than one case per day, and both metrics say at that point, you're okay to have full physical return." And get you that information, you know, so that there can be some discussion there, too. It's not quite as time, I don't, you don't have to really worry about it as quickly if we're going to a less restrictive environment, but certainly, we'll continue to look at the numbers. It's a habit now for me, I get up every day and pull up my Leadtown article that has all those numbers, and my Pennsylvania Department of Health, and I pull up the Harvard study that gives you a seven-day average, which is also... Brooke?
And just to tag on that, the Department of Health via Dr. Levine has indicated that they're gonna be compiling some metrics that look specifically at qualitative data to provide some recommendations to school districts. So we won't be floating alone, we just don't have that right now. And I think it's really important to emphasize what Gary's saying. Her analysis, even as a scientist, is that there's a quantitative part to making a decision to sort of progress to something less restrictive or more restrictive, but there's also a qualitative aspect to that. And that's what's really critical, because I think it takes an educator to determine, number one, are we ready to jump back into something? There's a scientist, and there's numbers, and there's data, and then there's decision-making of an educator like Dr. Messinger. So with those in conjunction, I think we'll be well-suited to make those decisions with the information we have there. But even the doctors are saying, it's gonna be individualized based upon districts and the success that you're having with the plan. So I just wanna reemphasize that, because it's gonna sound goosey-goosey to a board member, but that's because not even our Department of Health has explicit guidance. There's going to be qualitative wiggle room.
I also wanna mention, that question also, there's another detail there, too. We are going to ask people that begin with the livestream virtual option to, to do that option until September 30th, so that, to give that an opportunity to see how well it's working. At that point, we will give them an opportunity to change to physical if they'd like, but that will give us time to, if we need to readjust things to the class sizes, or, you know, make sure that they're going to a class, that their numbers are still okay. We're asking for some time there for them, if they're gonna choose that option, to stay in that option until then. And then after that, it would be the end of each marking period, whether it's a quarter or trimester, that they would have the option to switch. You could go from physical to virtual at any time, that would not impact us at all. But from virtual to physical changes our buses, changes our class sizes, so we are gonna ask that they, if they choose that, to stay in that option for a little bit.
If a family has their, we're in the hybrid, and the family has their children, their child in school, decides to keep them home and go virtual for three or four days because they've got a fever, they're sick...
Yep.
They can come back, but they don't have to commit to...
Correct.
...September 30th or the end of the month.
Correct. If they're, if they're on a physical, if they're coming physically, and for some reason, they have to stay home, which, which this is also a nice benefit of the livestream. We are gonna have people quarantined, we are gonna have kids that have symptoms. They may not be COVID symptoms, but they have symptoms, and they have to stay home. They might feel okay, and they wanna come to class, and they want, so they can, they can tune in virtually on those days at their home and livestream their teachers and continue with their schooling, even though they have to be home because they have some symptoms.
Are those the same time, time restraints or restrictions that families choosing V3 will be tied into as well, or is that different?
V3 does have restrictions about moving back and forth, but they're slightly different. Are we ready to pass it around, Michelle, and have everybody have an opportunity to talk?
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Well, I think, under, Director Buck's, under parliamentary procedures, I think we need to receive a motion before we have discussion on the motion. Is that correct?
Wait. I thought we were just discussing this in relation to the presentation, but Brooke, can you, can you guide?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question, because I wasn't sure, when I, when I look at the agenda, if we were, we were officially on 6.1, or if we were still in the presentation zone. But if we're officially on 6.1, and the absolute proper way would be a motion and a second, but if we're still in presentation, number five, you can discuss.
My assumption is that we are still in presentation. Before we move to motion, I was going to offer for public comment, to see if those folks joined us. Is that fine?
Yes, and I would just like to note that when we do, when we do have a motion, under parliamentary procedures, would like to make sure that every director has an opportunity to speak, before any director speaks twice, and that, under the procedures, each director is limited to two comments on the motion.
I don't have an issue with everybody giving a chance to speak before anybody else does. I don't know that your board policy limits the number of comments or the period of time relative to board members. It would depend on what version of Robert's rules you've adopted, but I think whatever you're suggesting is that everybody goes one at a time, and people don't talk over each other, and that we don't have excessive discussion on things that have already been stated. Am I summarizing that accurately?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I agree with that recommendation, and I think Dr. Buck will proceed.
Director Naum, were you going to start us off with your comments, or...
Hold on. If our either of those is here? Okay, we still do not see either of the public members that signed up to call.
Okay, thank you.
I will reserve my comments for the motion.
Okay. Well...
And then has a discussion?
Oh, it's on our side now.
Ask the other.
Repeat that.
Michelle, would you like to make, if we make the motion and then has a discussion? Is that okay?
Sure, yep, we can move forward with that. All right, then we will move forward to approve the instructional plan. May I have a motion to approve the Northern Lebanon School District instructional plan as presented? A second? Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Are you ready to go to Director Gray?
Michelle, we're gonna start with Director Gray.
All right.
Okay, this is Director Gray, and I have, I'll basically make two comments. One is that my comments tonight are concerning the instructional plan, not the health and safety plan. But the health and safety, instructional plan, first of all, I think everybody would agree that we all want the kids back in school. I don't think there's any argument, like, different on how we want that to happen, but certainly, it is in all our best interest to have that as a goal, as a wish. Sometimes we wish for things we can't have, but certainly, this is something that we all want. That being said, I personally have gone back and forth, and I don't think I've thought about any issues more than I have as a board member than this one. But at the end of the day, I've looked at Gary's, at Dr. Messinger's plan, it seems very well-thought-out, level-headed, it's very intuitive, and has some, I love the live-streaming idea, the kids who, and parents that feel a little bit awkward about sending their kids, they have those options that, that gives them the access to that education without actually being there. So I'm very impressed with the plan, and I'm gonna go forward with it. Thank you.
As far as the plan goes, my concerns, I think that Dr. Messinger and the administration have done a nice job preparing and talking with others, studying their facts, and I feel it's a solid plan. I think there is a part of it that Dr. Messinger has to be trusted on, and I think it's, he's proven in ten months on the job, he has my trust that, you know, I honestly couldn't tell you if Dr. Messinger's a Republican or a Democrat, so I'm not, I'm not worried that , oh, he's doing this to support this side, you know? And I'm sure everybody can say the same about me, too. But, but honestly, I, I do trust Dr. Messinger to make, you know, these decisions on a daily basis. As he said, he wakes up in the morning and checks, you know, the Harvard study, the Kent study, and all that stuff. So I feel the three options are very legitimate, and I'll support where he wants to be as of today, which is the Level Two. I guess we didn't get into specifics as far as what the, what the plans are with masks, with staff or students, but that, those things would, you know, I'm sure you'll share with us. But as far as the three options, I, I think it's nice to always offer that, the virtual option, no matter what, because that kind of can appease to the people that, you know what, we, we just feel more comfortable, no matter what the numbers say, to have our child or children pulled out for the time being, so I think that's a great option to keep, and I definitely support what Dr. Messinger and his administrators have come up with.
I, Dr. Gray, I agree. I had never thought about a decision this much, and it's, and I know, and I don't think anyone is taking the decision lightly. I would say I'm far more interested in the safety plan, and I'm fine with the, this plan moving forward, but it would be contingent on making sure the safety plan did its best to ensure that while students are here, they are indeed safe, so I'm looking forward to next week.
Who wants the puck first?
Do you wanna go that way?
I'll take it that way.
Disinfected, bring it inside.
Yeah, I would, I would echo some of the other directors' comments. You know, this is, this has been every waking hour thinking about this, and certainly for what's happening at school, but for people's families as well. This, and this is a topic that has so many different opinions. So it's, it's challenging topic to tackle, but I do agree that everyone has the same goal in mind, everybody here on the board, I think. We might have some differing opinions, but we all wanna try to get the kids back to We might have some differing opinions, but we all want to try to get the kids back to school as safely as possible. And I do believe the plan that, um, um, was put before us does that. I also think because of all those different unique situations in homes, you know, every family's got a unique situation that that even though we might think there's a very clear path that it should be level one or level two, having these options, um, really takes those, um, unknown situations, uh, into consideration. So I think that it was just well thought out. Um, I I'd also echo that, um, you know, Dr. Messinger, you know, over the time you've been here, you know, you you have proven that, um, um, you know, you're up to the job to make the decisions like this, and I'll say that because I think anytime there's been big decisions, it doesn't seem like it's happening in a vacuum. You will be reaching out to board members, the community and other advisors to to help them make those decisions. So, you know, the question was asked, is this only in in your hands or should it be in the board's hands? And I had that same thought, you know, should there be should there be something else there? I as I thought through that, I am comfortable that, um, that, um, you know, the the plan is set up the way it is. I really like the fact that on the on the even on the level two plan, I I like the thoughtfulness on the, uh, on the elementary side because that is, a- as I've heard people in the community talk about, that that is the one area that they have struggled with. If it is truly virtual, if if those kids are at home, they are concerned about the education of their kids and and, you know, I think, uh, the school district did an incredible job to scramble at the end of last year to get something in place, but I think if we're honest with ourselves, many parents would say we had we had a D or maybe an F in in that virtual side, and that's because it's difficult. It's difficult, you know, when you're making adjustments to work life, you know, ha- you're all of a sudden a teacher, et cetera. So I just think it was the the plan was very thoughtful. Uh, appreciate all the levels there, and I'd also agree that I think the the details in the safety plan are gonna be critical to uh, the success of us executing this. Um, you know, every day I I work in a business where we do have people in and and, you know, we've put a lot of the same things in place that the team at N L has suggested in terms of the safety protocol. And as long as you're religious about those, I believe those things will keep our keep our kids safe.
Um, I'll keep it really brief. Um, I don't want to, uh, duplicate what everybody else has said. I certainly, you know, I wish there was an option normal. Um, I know that's what we all want, uh, but it it doesn't exist right now, and so in the midst of some really difficult decisions, I think our administration has done a fantastic job of developing this instructional plan. Um, I like the fact that we have, uh, several options and that, uh, families can make the options, uh, choose the option that's best for them. Uh, there's some flexibility there for them to be able to to balance that for their individual needs, and so um, I'm thankful for the time that was put into that and, uh, I know that time will continue to be put into, uh, keeping um, our kids and our staff, uh, safe as we move forward.
So my biggest concern is going back to full day instruction and not knowing when the right time is or not starting back in full full day instruction right now. I'd like to hear more about when we go back into full day instruction. I understand there's no one-size-fits-all answer, but almost everyone I talk to wants to see kids go back to full classroom instruction. I'd like to find I'd like to see our district find a way to make that happen. Our school provides social, emotional, and mental health and most of all, an education for the kids in our district. I think there's a lot of consequences for not having kids go back to school full-time. And I I know we're talking mostly about the high school kids who are gonna be going two days a week, but what I also think of the sixth and seventh graders aren't mature enough to do it do it by themselves. My family would be fine, but when I pause and I think I can think about the ones that aren't aren't gonna be fine with, um, having to take on those duties at home. There are also options for families who choose not to send their kids to school. If you look around, a lot of schools are opening up full full dates, full classroom instruction, with the option to not send their kids to school if they if they feel that it's, uh, dangerous. Every time we leave our house, there's a risk. Every time we get out of bed, there's a risk, but we don't do a one-eighty and stay in bed all day. We do what we can do to control it. And what we can't control, we can't control. This has been in our community since March. We have lived with it for months now. Reports indicate there's gonna be a lengthy recovery. I don't think we can hit the pause button on education when we do and we can talk about, um, different studies or metrics that aren't proven. We're not scientists, we're board directors. Our duty is to give the children in our community an education. I don't think that we that we are to determine a metric to use. I feel like that should be coming down from a state level. I'd like to see full classroom instruction until the governor places our county into red or specific district information. That's all I got.
I think I'll reiterate, this is awful. I don't think any one of us up here really feels a hundred percent confident in either decision that we're making because we don't know we don't know what COVID looks like in schools because we shut down in March, so we're going into this almost blind. I personally, as a parent, am very grateful for the hybrid and for the live streaming. We, as a family, have decided to do the live streaming, but I feel like this hybrid live streaming V three kind of hits both extremes, those who don't feel comfortable at all, those that feel a hundred percent comfortable, and those in the middle who just really aren't sure what they want to do yet and they can try live streaming. I do like setting the timeline so that they can't jump back into the classroom and really put the burden on our teachers. I don't know how that's gonna look. I mean, we're doing our first live stream meeting and we had some bumps in the road getting that going, and I think that'll happen. I think we owe it to our staff and we owe it to our administration to try this. This is a plan that they believe in, and I think that with their efforts, we can really support our our staff in making sure that any online learning that our students get looks a lot different than what we saw when it was unexpectedly forced in their hands, so.
So I had prepared some remarks too, but I'll try not to speechify. I think a lot of people have said a lot of the things that I was thinking as well. I will use my notes just to keep my thoughts ordered. As everyone has said, this has been the most difficult, uh, period of time that I think any of us can imagine, especially when it comes to making decisions. And, uh, Director Marlowe mentioned every waking hour. It's been many of the hours that should have been sleeping hours for me too, trying to figure out what the right approach to do is, and, uh, it has struck me that every decision that has been made by authorities in the past four or five months has been made in the interest of a select few of people that are at risk and, you know, I think as President Lincoln would say, it's altogether fitting and proper that we would do something like that. Uh, but there's a larger sense too that I think about the impact that it's had on our students. I've talked to and heard from so many people in the community that have thought out very deeply as much as we have this issue. They have opinions that are based on what they see. Those are strong opinions. I'm very grateful for all of them. The the one abiding fact that I've heard through all of that is that virtual learning does not work. It is not the best option for our students. I agree with comments that have been said that the best option for our students is to have our kids in the classroom receiving instruction from their teachers who are professional and very capable of doing that. Uh, that's the best perfect world option, but unfortunately, we don't have a perfect world right now. The other abiding fact that I've become pretty well aware of is that, uh, there isn't any way in any of this to make everybody happy. And and I'm pretty convinced that there's not any way to make anybody happy in in the decision that we're gonna make ultimately, and and I know that I'm not happy. It's it's easy for this to sort of be an intellectual and academic exercise for a lot of us, thinking about, um, all of the factors without remembering the very real impact that it has on people. I'm concerned about any decision that we make that requires uh, virtual learning because of the burden that it places on students and the places on families. It introduces to those families problems that, uh, they they may not otherwise have to deal with to include keeping a job or keeping a house or staying in the district. Uh, so for that reason, I I believe the best option is in-person instruction as quickly as we can get there, but again, I don't believe we're in that situation, so we have asked the administration and Dr. Messinger to put together this plan as the state required them to do, and I think they've done a a lot of hard and good work in it. Uh, they have spent more minutes and hours and days thinking about this than we have probably. They've talked certainly to more people than we have and we've all talked to to many, many. I think the plan, while no per- while not perfect because no plan is perfect, is is very good. It gives options, as people have said. It, um, attempts to address contingencies that we know are out there. It also, I think, attempts pretty well to address contingencies that that we don't know about that may fly our way, and so I think it's a valuable plan in that regard. I would just like for us to keep in mind, uh, that the decision that we make tonight, no matter what it is, is gonna come at a price, and I think that price is primarily our students. And I want to see us in school, in-person instruction as quickly as humanly possible. Uh, I I know this is anecdotal and I don't like to deal in anecdotes, uh, but through the academic exercise, I finally sat down to talk with my son, who's a senior this year, class of twenty twenty-one, and, uh, he gave, you know, some some insight that I think is is important and and while his story's not the only story, I think it's indicative of what's happening. He turns sixteen in April. Uh, he had to wait three months to get his driver's permit. He lost his summer job because of me. He is, uh, notionally headed to college next fall, but his ACT's been canceled three times. He hasn't been able to visit a single university. He doesn't know, and we don't know, when he might be able to do that. Uh, in his own words, for the last three years, he's taken a pile of courses as prerequisites for the courses he was really excited to take as a senior, and those courses are courses that would have him doing hands-on work in tech and lab work and science. He wants to be an engineer. And, uh, we we say we want our kids to pursue STEM and and my biggest concern about virtual learning is that, you cannot do lab work and get that hands-on experience that that you need. And, uh, I he's got a guitar unfinished sitting in the in the tech room right now. He doesn't know if he'll get to finish it. That was from the year before. Uh, and and from his perspective, and I don't think he's alone, people and not him, and I know he's a teenager and I know he's inclined to feel things like that, but I also know he's not alone, and and the challenges that that we're putting in front of these kids are significant and they're real. As one other director said, I know my son's gonna be fine. He'll be okay. But the experience of these kids and from the class of twenty twenty and all the classes that come after are real experiences, and I just want us to be mindful of that, and so I I support this plan. I think it's the best that can be done under the circumstances we're in, even if it's not fully in the best interest of our students, it is a good plan and I support it. But I'm gonna be pushing for us to move to full in-person instruction as soon as we are able to do so safely. And, uh, and and that's our that's my priority. I agree that that should be the priority of the district, but, um, it's a good plan. And and I'm really grateful for the work that was done, uh, to put it together and to give our parents and families as much information as they need to make an informed decision. And I think ultimately, that's what we're tasked to do right now, and I think the plan does it. I really do hope that parents that don't want their kids in person in school take advantage of the options that it has. I hope they do that. And I hope that we're able to provide a great education for those kids that are present. Dr. Bucks, I guess you're it.
It would be helpful if I unmuted myself first. So I'll try to keep my my comments short. I've been talking about pandemics long before it was a thing, uh, long before everybody was talking about pandemics. My training is as a scientist in a department that was entirely made of virologists and immunologists. Um, I've sat through many, many, uh, presentation where talented scientists deciphered at a molecular level how viruses ravage cells and the physiological effects that viruses have on animals. So I I say that simply to emphasize that I appreciate the risks presented by this virus. And although the mortality rate that we are seeing now that we do have some level of treatments for the virus does not appear to be as high as was originally, um, seen, my concerns are in the long term. We still know so little about this virus. Six months is just a blip in time in the scientific method. There is so much that this virus is presenting that is extremely concerning for our kids and our adults in the long term. And so I I could go on and on about this. I won't, um, for the the because of time. But I will say that my gut reaction is to take a very cautious approach. I think that we should be doing as much in a remote fashion as possible. We have a responsibility to our community to reduce the spread of this virus as much as possible because our actions affect everybody in this community. And so if we want to reduce the spread as much as possible, that would mean continued online learning. However, our society depends in so many ways on kids getting back to school. I also agree that kids belong in school for the best, at least our our younger kids especially, belong in school physically to have that best experience. I also know that, um, you know, many of the things that were already discussed, um, regarding our special needs students, our English language learner students, our kids that come from difficult home situations. It's important in many ways to get kids back in school physically. But in our situation right now, we are juggling all of these struggles. How do we keep individuals safe? How do we keep our community safe? How do we continue delivering a good education to our kids? And as many of others have already said, this decision is immeasurably difficult because there is, um, as I see it, no easy answer, no good answer when we are in the midst of the pandemic. And so after a lot of thought, my decisions moving forward revolve around two things. As long as infection rates remain low, I believe it is important to give all families and teachers choice to return to school physically or to learn online. The key point there is that infection rates need to remain low so as we are not imposing significant spread out into the community. So that is point number one, and point number two is that reducing the possibility of spread in the school as much as possible. And so for our kids that are returning to school, we need to make sure that we are doing every single thing possible to reduce the risk of spread. And so knowing those two things as my significant concern, I will be appro- I will be voting yes to the curriculum plan. I think it is important that we are giving everybody choice. My significant concerns with the health and safety plan is how we're gonna prevent the spread within our walls um, and prevent the spread from kids out into the community because it is clear that because it is clear that kids are capable of spreading the virus. My other concern is for teachers. I do not believe that teachers should be considered frontline workers. I think it is important to give teachers some choice in how they return to teaching. I'm not certain what that choice would look like, but I don't support forcing them to return to an environment which would most certainly promote the spread of virus and potentially infect them. So the details of the health and safety plan are going to be key for me as well as giving choice to teachers as we move forward with these plans of physically reopening. Are there any other directors who would like to make further comment? Can you move the, can you please move that? Yes, thanks.
Is the conditions to move from level to level in the health and safety plan? Or is it going to be a judgment call as the document states?
In this, there are no specific conditions in the health and safety plan. Those are, those are more guidelines than anything. But I, I think, I think I'll let, Brooke and I were talking about this. Brooke, can you hear me? We were talking about the condition, about specific conditions. And the problem with specific conditions is that you're tied then into something that is true now, but may not be true. For instance, in the health and safety plan, a couple of weeks ago, we had, we had things in the health and safety plan based on 250 people. And, because that was the rule at the time. Now that's changed and now it's a 20-fup. So the problem with putting restrictions like that, very specifics like that in there, create this issue where if, if something else changes and we're not allowed to do certain things, but we have that in the, in that plan, then we're locking into things that aren't necessarily true. It's, it's changing still for us at least weekly, if not sometimes daily, some of the guidelines that have come out. The masks, the masks, the discussion about the masks. You know, that, that was July 1st when the order came. You know, that, that changed everything about what people were thinking about in terms of what we had to do. So I know, Brooke and I, Brooke, we had a discussion about that. Is there anything I missed there?
Not really, just to say, so the, the plan, the health and safety plan as ordered by PDE requires it to be passed if any form of in-person instruction is going to occur. So I was at a meeting on Monday night and there was some wavering back and forth and ultimately if the, the plan hadn't passed, they would have been on a wholly virtual plan because the health and safety plan is required to be passed before in-person instruction begins in any form. Within that plan, there are yellow, green and red designations about precautions that go in there. But there's no requirement from PDE that you indicate what the instructional approach is specific to necessarily those colored phases, other than of course, red, when we know school is closed. And that's why you have a more specific plan, instructional plan that Gary's outlined for you. And he sort of told you his recommendations and what he claims to implement is going to be based upon the data and the qualitative considerations relative to the educational status of the district. So the only broad-based requirement that needs to be in the health and safety plan is how you intend to have safe conditions if you invite students back to school. And a district simply selects the form of instruction they're doing at the time they submit the plan. And as Gary mentioned, it is supposed to be a, a plan that is as specific to what's required, but as broad as it can be so that you're not constantly revising it. It certainly was a plan developed by lawyers and educators, probably one of the worst combinations you can imagine. And we're all trying to work within this very strange construct. You are one of the smartest districts to have waited until August to consider this plan. Districts passed theirs a month or more ago and have had to, to go through multiple layers of revisions. So you are probably in the best position possible to make an educated guess as to a plan that meets the requirements of the guidance as it stands now and to give you the most flexibility with the instructional leveled model you want to implement moving forward with the absolute goal of increasing the amount of in-person instruction. That's the best plan.
What the plan does do though is it ties, it kind of explains what our procedures would be in Level One or Level Two. But I will tell you that after a lot of discussion, we came to the realization that most of the things that we can do in yellow, which is the more restricted phase from a governor's standpoint, we can also do in green. And you're going to see now in this plan, if you've looked online lately, and I don't know if you have, but if you've looked online lately, you're going to see the yellow things outlined and you're going to say, you're going to see green, in a lot of cases says, same procedures as, as are in yellow. And then we're going to continue to take those extended precautions, whether we're in yellow or we're in green. And there are a few exceptions, there are a few more things that, that we could be a little less stringent on, but for the most part, you're going to see those look very, very simple. I, I was, for instance, talking about disinfecting and the sprayers that we used. We were literally playing with one today in here in the library, hogging the, this room, the chairs and the tables. And honestly, I volunteered that when my, my day is done as superintendent, that I will go around and hog because it's kind of fun.